I'd like to bring this meeting to order. Seven oh one. Your call.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Present. I would like to say to all board members that if you will make sure your microphones are on at this time. Thank you. Are there any agenda items to be added?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add discussion of the Board of Supervisors payment, annual payment to the Pennsylvania County Service Authority for hydrant maintenance to the agenda.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Blackstock and a second by Mr. Farmer. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I think it's important. We've got the Service Authority here tonight. Mr. Harwell, Mr. Fitzgerald, I see the Executive Director back there and also the Attorney. And it's been much discussion concerning hydrant payment, fee payment to the Service Authority. And as I have stated in previous meetings, I think it's very important before we start taking action with a budget concern and fee that we discuss it with or have input from the Pennsylvania County Service Authority. So that's the reason I'm asking to be added to the agenda.
Any more discussion? All right. Hearing none.
One other thing. I think we owe it to these gentlemen. Mr. Fitzgerald's been on that Service Authority at least 15 years. Mr. Harwell, how many years?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Mr. Adcock does an excellent job and we also have the Attorney for the Service Authority here tonight. We at least owe it to them to hear input from them concerning that fee.
I'm going to open that with that motion, that second. I think you'll do that on the screen.
Counselor, correct me if I'm wrong. This is not going to be a public hearing tonight. This is not going to be a discussion between constituents as well as the board members. Am I correct?
Well, it's just going to be, it's going to be an addition and if you desire to hear from them, you're welcome to hear from them.
That would require a vote though, would it not? Or consensus of the board? We've already had a public hearing, have we not?
There's been a public hearing on the budget, but this item is added tonight.
Okay.
And if they're in attendance and you desire-
I'm going to follow your guidance, Counselor.
Okay.
Okay. So we've already had discussion. Now, do we put this to a vote to add this item to the agenda?
That's what you're doing right now.
Okay. All right, hearing no more discussion.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
That's unanimous.
We approve the agenda.
Now, new business.
Now, we need to approve the agenda. We approved the addition.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Warren. Any discussions?
Will the motion be added prior to the vote on the budget? Would it make sense?
Logistically, it makes sense to do it before because it impacts the budget. So I would advise you to make it prior to the vote on the agenda.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
That's unanimous. New business? Five A. Previous school budget. Mr. Kim Van Der Heide.
The first item that you have for consideration tonight is to approve the school budget. It was advertised in the Star Tribune on March the 13th for a public hearing, which is a statutory requirement of the state of Virginia. And we held that public hearing on March the 28th. We also had four separate budget hearings or budget meetings with our citizens at the four high schools throughout the month of March to hear comments from them. And we've had several finance committee meetings since then. So it's also a statutory requirement that you cannot approve that budget on the night of the public hearing, which was held last Thursday night. And we have to wait seven days before you all can vote. So that is why we are here tonight for you all to consider this. And the school budget totals $96,031,927. And it includes a local appropriation of $18,836,709. And so we are asking for you all to consider the approval of the school budget. And that is a budget that does have to be replaced for the schools by May 1st each year.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the FY 2020 Pennsylvania County Schools budget in the amount $96,031,927, which includes a local appropriation $18,836,709.
Second. Do I have a motion by Mr. Blackstock? Second. We have a second by Mr. Farmer. All right. Thank you though, Dr. Miller. Do we have any more discussion? Was that Mr. Harwell was the second? No, I thought it was Mr. Farmer. Thank you. Mr. Harwell was the second. Any more discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to my item five B.
This will be discussion of the Service Authority.
I was going to add that in the C. Okay.
Before you get to C, you probably need to discuss this as an impact C. If you did that, it would be like closing the board after course.
All right. In this proposed budget, are we not utilizing $78,000 that we anticipate paying the Service Authority? Is removing that from the payment for them to utilize in other areas of the budget?
At the, excuse me, at the finance committee meeting Tuesday, the recommendation was to use the 78, 800 that was allocated for PCSA and to allocate it to the Gretna Library and that, Gretna Library renovation project. And that would be for two successive years. So we would do the same in FY 2020.
Have we had any discussion since the previous budget meeting with the Service Authority?
Yes, sir.
So the Board of Supervisors is going to take $78,000 out of the Service Authority's budget without even discussing with the Service Authority? Is that what we do?
Yeah, it appears we're going to do it now.
But we haven't arranged for any discussion up until this point. I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from Mr. Adcock or a representative from the Service Authority, how this will affect their, negatively affect their budget. I mean, we all live in the same county. This board actually appoints each one of those gentlemen to the Service Authority. And they've done a wonderful job administering the Service Authority over the years. In fact, they've handled their money a lot better than the Board of Supervisors have. They've actually got some reserves over there and got big projects, anticipate a big project. I'd like to hear from the Service Authority, how this will affect their budget.
Mr. Adcock?
Thanks, sir. I appreciate you hearing us tonight. This came up, I think, last year and some of this information I'm going to provide may be, may be a repeat of what you've heard before, but we request this fee to continue to be paid. This fee is about 3% of our budget where I think it's about a tenth of a percent of the county's budget. It's a code item. It's in section 21, seven of the Pennsylvania County Code and it's called a fire protection service charge. So this charge is purposes to defray some of the cost of installing water mains, reservoirs, and fire hydrants of sufficient size to provide fire protective service within the project service areas and to all properties adjacent to the system. This annual service charge is $200 for hydrant and that's been the same for about 35 years. We have not raised that fee at all for about 35 years. So if you look at this simple, simple increase in costs, you know, it'd be about $500 now. In most cases, the size of our water mains, particularly in residential areas, could be much smaller if fire protection is not provided. The minimum size of lines we install for hydrant protection is about six inches in diameter. This increases the cost to install new systems. We recently completed hydrant maintenance and testing and painting of a project, which was done in 50-year, 2017. That was about $160,000 we paid to do that. And the painting alone for all of our hydrants was $86,000. This provides a fee to cover the water that we use for trainings as well as fighting fires. You know, I think it's been discussed that these hydrants are only in service areas of part of the county, but some of the volunteer fire departments come and get water from hydrants and take it to other parts of the county to fight fires.
Do you charge for those fees?
We do not.
You don't charge for those, that water at all?
No, sir. Dr. Parker, pardon me, sir. And we also only charge for, we charge this fee on hydrants that the Service Authority has paid to install. Any projects the county has installed in the past, those hydrants are removed from the calculation. So we do not charge the county based on hydrants that they've installed at their expense. It's only the ones that have been installed at Service Authority's expense. And that's roughly 394 hydrants right now. The amount to install a hydrant currently, based on average bid prices of a recent project, is around $4,000 to install a hydrant. And that's all I've got. If there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from the board?
I'd like to point out one thing. One of the main projects that the Service Authority is working on is getting Henry County to 29. And the long-term goal is to service Chad on the north end of Pennsylvania County, because I hear they come up all the time, the hydrants of Middle County down. That's the focus, we're trying to get the water flow to 29, which opens up all kinds of avenues. Anybody thinks they're not getting serviced, that's the long-term plan that we're working
Do you have a large product, a project, a large project in the works?
We do, yeah.
And how many millions of dollars does that one cost?
The initial estimate is about a little less than $12 million to connect the systems feeding our, from our D.A. West system, connecting to the Highway 41 Mount Herman system over to the Route 29 North system and incorporating the Mount Herman, I'm sorry, the Mount Cross system. So what it will do, it will provide interconnection for all our systems, which will, you know, currently our systems are kind of fed by one fee and all of our kind of one fee systems. So if we do have a problem on the main line, it can put a lot of customers out of waters. What we're doing now is opening to connect these systems to provide backup redundant supply.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Speaker, so tonight's budget, proposed budget, $78,000 line item for PCSA, is it in or out?
It is, it has been moved from PCSA contribution line to contingents. So it's in the budget. It's just not in that line.
And in order for it to legally, for this process to take place, kind of like maybe tonight's getting the ball started, but legally it's a public hearing, legislative committee, and then vote?
Yes, sir. It would go to legislative committee first. And if there's a positive recommendation, then it would be a public hearing and then vote, yes.
And if it failed, it would move back into its original?
Yes, and it would defund the library renovation, yes. And that can be done at any time. There's no schedule.
But there's no reason we couldn't find other funding for the library?
Well, if you cut something, yeah.
Utilize some contingency. I want to make it clear then, because I've got them so I'm always more.
Mr. Adcock, I appreciate all the work you do. I'll get on your soapbox anytime. I have several occasions where I needed to contact you and you were very professional, excellent, and I appreciate that very much. So I want to be publicly to say, you're doing a great job. And I would assume that the due diligence has been done on the $12 million project, which I am big advocate for because we need that line for a lot of reasons. But, and it certainly would affect some of my district, but I would assume that the studies have been done and that it's anticipated, at least based on the studies, that that line will be a revenue producer or at least revenue neutral, what you're getting. And you're going to require debt and you're assuming enough people are going to get on that line to service that debt. I'm sure that was in the study, right?
Yeah, that plus cost savings on the water purchased. That's a major, that's going to be a major consideration. It's going to be less fees for us to pay for the water that we currently serve. In addition, you know, we, what we're looking for is a opportunity to help evolve in water loan fund. And they don't just have, they don't throw that money out. You have to go through financial checks. They review our budgets. They review our financial audits. And they're very strict with that. So yes, sir, it does come under a strict financial evaluation.
And I would be the first to say, Mr. Adcock, if you have a project like that and you need additional assistance in this board to assist you, I would want you to come and say what you can.
Yeah, we appreciate that. And I feel like it's good that we can stand alone when we do products like that. So that we can show that we are able to do that with our revenue that we've kept and produced.
Mr. Blackstock.
The Service Authority, Mr. Adcock, King Manes, who was Executive Director a few years ago, but has pretty much stood on its own and actually through long-term financial planning, isn't a pretty, isn't in a healthy financial situation of its current format. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Very healthy. If you look at their offer, very healthy.
And I, and the reason I say that, I want to point that out is because this whole process has bothered me from the beginning because we've not had a meeting with the Service Authority or had discussion. And we owe people like Mr. Fitzgerald, who's been on here for years, and Mr. Harwell and the other members of that board, who have been very effective in good projects in providing water services and other utilities to county residents. And I've already saw an email, I saw an email come across, the Board of Supervisors, to all the supervisors just recently, asked what is the process for the Board of Supervisors to take over the Service Authority? When I read that, I almost fell out of my chair. The Service Authority has done, has been nothing but financially stable and has done long-term planning. This board is, our Board of Supervisors, we're spending money like drunken sailors up here. And I'm scared if the Board of Supervisors got their hands on y'all's money, they were drained. So I'm very much opposed of that right up front. But I think this is one step right in the direction of taking $78,000 without even discussing. The second thing that bothers me, Mr. Chairman, is we're talking about doing something that requires a public hearing. We're basically ignoring the public. If you have a public hearing, you're required to have a public hearing for this process. We should be here having a public hearing and then making the decisions of whether this goes in the budget or not. The third thing that bothers me is we're trying to use this as a political football, in my opinion, to say the Gretna Library doesn't get funded if we don't do this. It's money in contingency, is it not, Mr. Smitherman, to fund the library project if this board wants to do so?
Not in maintenance contingency goals.
But the contingency has that amount of money in, $78,000 if we need it to pull it out?
It can be spent on the Gretna Library or it can be spent on PCSA.
Or put other monies in contingency.
You know, our goal and the instructions were to start building fund balance back and we set a minimum threshold of 235 for contingency. We did achieve a little more than that. I don't think it's a full 78A, but there-
Pretty close.
There is money if you would want to set aside your goals of building back fund.
Above the 235.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some comments and a few questions. Just, Mr. Adcock, if you passed this cost on to the residents that were actually utilizing the water authority or Service Authority, how much would that cost per bill?
I think it was stated in, we have about 3,500 customers. It was about $2 per one customer.
Well, the second thing, the reason this all came about is we had a few members that did not vote to even advertise a new for the budget because they wanted cost savings. My ideal, being the finance chairman, was to garner a little more money. I think we got it up to somewhere in the $700,000 range. And I have no problems if you guys want to keep funding this, then we allocate some more money for the library from that. I'm fine with that. But also, I mean, if we're going to start spending money, I'd also like to allocate the $75,000 for the employee rates if we're going to, instead of waiting till January. I just, my whole goal is to try to come in and satisfy the ones that weren't happy with the budget and try to show some cost savings. But if you guys want to kind of get away from that, I'm more than happy with that. And I guess one other question I have, it's kind of my understanding that there is a leak in the sewage system on Mount Cross Road. And I believe I heard there was like a $10,000 a month cost. And I was wondering why that hasn't been addressed and if not, well, this money, maybe, is there some way you can get some money to fund that fix? Because that's $120,000 a year that that's costing the county.
You might be referring to infiltration and inflow that we have in our Mount Herman system. And that's a, every sewer, if you have a sewer, you've got that problem. And we have been working for the last, since I've been here, I started that project in 2015. And we have spent probably close to $100,000 on metering, testing, smoke testing, pipelining. And we're still working to find that problem. But it's not like we can go out, oh, there it is, and we turn off a switch and it stops. We've been working on trying to get that solved, yes, sir.
I understand. That's a pretty good steep cost, $120,000 a year. And how many years has this been going on?
It's been occurring before I got here.
Okay.
Mr. Warner?
I'd like to follow up on that because I was made aware of it as soon as I came to the board. It does disappoint me, but it reflects that all boards have issues and problems that arise that you're trying to deal with. And no board's perfect. You know, this board's been slammed some tonight, which I think is inappropriate if you don't have a perfect house yourself. And, you know, to allow this problem to be persisting for that number of years, I hope the board is giving you all you need in ammunition and efforts. I mean, think about that, just since you've been here, at $10,000 a month.
But it's not every month. I'm sorry, interruption. It occurs when it rains, heavy rains.
Something every month?
No, not necessarily. We don't have abnormal rainfall.
But damn, last year it had to kill.
It was, yeah, I mean, we had a historic rainfall.
Right. So it had to be astronomical last year.
It was, I mean, it was pleasure to, yes, sir.
And that's not on you. You inherited that problem. So, but I think the board should do all they can do to clean that problem up. And I've said it from day one when this came up. I don't have a problem with us putting it back in the budget either. I don't have a problem we take it out. I think I benefit as being one of the recipients that has the benefit of being on the Service Authority. I know my tax, I mean, I know my insurance is lower than the $2 I pay a month because I have that benefit to the fire hydrant. But I'm also cognizant of the fact if that's something you need in order to complete your budget, I'm fine with it. I'm happy if the rest of the county wants to subsidize my water. That's fine. I've said that from day one. So I don't have an issue with that. If we have that contingency, contingency to move that 78A back, I think we should strongly consider sending the same message to our employees and put the 75 back in too, Mr. Scares. Lower the contingency by 153, hold up.
Mr. Adcock, any more discussion with the board members?
I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Adcock and the members of the Service Authority for showing up tonight. And I'm sorry that we had these discussions before.
Could you move on now, County Counselor?
Yes.
Going to five B, approval of the county budget, the resolution, Mr. Van Der Heide.
The county budget, just like the school budget, was also advertised in the Star Tribune on March the 13th for a public hearing to be held on Thursday, March 28th, which was last week. And we did advertise a budget of $180,86,993. And since then, we've had several finance committee meetings and several changes have been made to that budget. And just so you all know, when you advertise a budget, you cannot go over that amount. So we have reduced the amount of the budget from $180,86,993 to $179,904,353. And this does incorporate the school budget that you just voted on and approved of $96, And we did send out the resolution this afternoon, and I do apologize that there aren't hard copies for you all, but I can certainly go over what's in there. It basically is the same document that you have every year and it pretty much tells you the things that were discussed in the finance meeting and some of the goals that we hope to achieve in the 20-year. And, you know, with that, I can entertain any questions. If you have specific questions, there's information in there about an e-rep program that you all discussed at the last finance committee meeting. It also includes the fact that we do hope after the beginning of the year to appropriate an additional $150,000 for the schools so that they have plenty to give the 5% state rates in that match. That is also included in there. This document also includes our fees. Last year, we only showed our fees for our community development department and our fire protection services. This year, we have incorporated recreation fees because we do charge for renting out the community center down the street. So those are there so that people are aware there's a go-to document and you can see those, just so that we're more transparent with those fees, as well as our landfill fees, which incorporates the fines that we have instilled, you know, at the compactor sites. They are there as well, as well as the pet center, adoption fees and any costs that we would be charging our citizens for that service there. But with that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have from the document that was sent out.
Mr. Chairman.
Blackstock?
Mr. Van Der Heide.
Yes.
And we have heard earlier, what line items do we need to change or do we need to change in the motion to include the $75,000 for the employees and withdrawing the $78,000 from the Service Authority and appropriating the amount of money, the same amount of money to the library that we originally projected?
Well, right now, the library renovations anyway needed to stay in the general fund because in transferring that amount of money to your capital and preference fund, it would increase your budget, which we probably have enough capacity to do that. But at this point, the thought was we would leave that in the contingency fund until after July 1st. And if you all remember, we do bring things back to you after the beginning of the year that need to be added or deducted or what have you, especially for schools, they'll give us final figures. And so the intention was to include that transfer from general fund over to your capital and preference. improvements fund. I know that's getting in the weeds, probably way more than you need, so right now, I would leave the library fee in contingency, I would just earmark it as such, which there's already an earmark for the 788. It's $78,800 is the exact amount that you need to reduce from contingency back to the PCSA line.
Okay.
And then our salary study, we have that in the non-departmental department anyway, but that would just go in a line item that's for salaries increases.
Can we?
I can summarize that. So you're adding $153,800 of cost to this budget, so you will be appropriating or earmarking $75,000 of general contingency to implement a pay study on July 1, and earmarking $78,800 for general contingency.
Is that pay study for the sheriff's office?
No, general.
No, that's, yeah, that's-
General board.
So $75,000 for general employee pay study, earmarking $78,800 of general contingency to Gretna Library Capital Reserve, is that okay? And eliminating sections 22 and 26 from the budget resolution. Actually, you don't have to do 22, excuse me, just 26.
Just 26. And 26, because I know everybody didn't have a friend, 26 says, "The board supervisor directs the county administrator to schedule the necessary public hearing to allow elimination of Pitts and Bandy County Code Section 21.7B referring to the fire protection service charge." So if you don't want to do that-
And all that does is obligate you to the public hearing. You know, I think it was mentioned that we've not had a public hearing on this issue, you can leave it in there, that'll obligate you, and you can have a public hearing, as you mentioned previously.
I would prefer that we have independent discussions with the service authority and then schedule a public hearing and remove it.
So that section 26?
All right, can you draft up, because this is a budget, this is very important, can you draft up something quickly for the motion?
I can touch that. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying that cannot be removed and this all cleaned up tonight?
It cannot? Say that again, I'm not sure I understand.
I mean, this can't be cleaned up tonight, where we eliminate? Yeah, it can be cleaned up.
Oh, you can just say that excluding section 26?
Yeah, and then-
And then it all goes away for a-
And then make the pay study start July 1, and get on that 788 back. I mean, why are we going to go chasing rabbits all month? And this is, the motion he drafts is going to be to that effect that you can leave it?
And money's in there for the library?
It's in there.
It'll become out of general contingency. Which is- You're reducing contingency by 153,800, which is, 153,800 will not be put back into bank this year.
Well, we'll have to see if we'll finish here.
So Kim, section 22 deals with the library, and all you're going to change is where that money is going.
Now, I think 22 is fine.
Here's what 22 says, Mr. Blackstock, and this is why it's okay to adopt it, it says, "The board supervisor intends to allocate $78,800 to its capital reserve account for two successive years to assist in the renovation of Gretna Library." So the library is in there.
And now, section 36 refers to adequate funding to complete Phase 3 of the county salary study effective January 1, that would just change to July 1.
What section?
36.
36.
And that should be the three sections that would have connected with the board over on tonight, but section 22's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you, Mr. Ad-
Okay.
The pet center, how much funding is in this budget for the pet center?
It's $866,000 and some odd dollars, let's see, I can tell you exactly, 866,047.
All right, and what about department that approved earlier, was that included in the department earlier?
Oh, no, this is staying along by itself, it's $866,000 for next year.
But we're reporting it in the whole left.
And other than that, $200,000 revenue to offset that, so they have to raise $200,000, and that is, that's in this budget as well. So that's in your adoption fees, your surrender fees, reclaim fees, and any events that they hold, or any donations that are made to the pet center.
Mr. Smitherman, this relates to this, I'm going to ask this question. A lot of people have asked me today, they saw where we were taking dogs in from Texas, and a lot of people are saying, "We don't have the money to run our own center, why are we taking them?"
Oh, no, sir. No, 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 it was a way station. So we were, there was a, gosh, I wish James was here, we were a way station today.
So they're not coming?
In fact, we had, they came, they stopped, they fed their dogs, they exercised, and they, it was a stop in the way, and they took some of ours.
Well, I think the public kind of got mixed up a little bit, they go, we're taking dogs from out of state, can you take your-
The press release is going out tomorrow that explains all this.
Yeah, we actually netted and-
Okay.
-out today.
The resolution also shows all of the tax information, too, which didn't change, all of that's in there. But we were really glad, we reached out to all the departments to see if there was any that wanted to improve their fees, so it is a document that you can point your citizens to, you know, if they're asking about certain fees that we charge.
Thank you, Mr. Banner Hyde. Let me ask you one question, though, in the, since we put cameras at the compactor sites, somebody was telling me that we're having an uptick in fines. Do you have an idea of what the fine level looks like?
Mr. Strong, do you know what the total? I know about a month ago, it was about $700 that we received.
Yeah, it's doubled, it's doubled.
Doubled.
But they're not everywhere, not at all the sites yet, right? Cameras? Okay, thank you, ma'am. So we're waiting for a prepared motion, right? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Turn the volume up a little. See if that person's- Get your thing right by now, we're getting out of running the channel right now. Budget resolution, that's what I'm thinking. Does, okay, okay.
You might want to, it's bigger for-
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
But it's small.
Probably should, the motion probably should-
Can we read it?
Well, it's from the chairman of the finances. I mean, I chair the finances, I usually do that every year. I would want to steal Mr. Smitherman's-
I am not a dictator, I can care of this, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion to approve fiscal year 2020 county budget as presented with $75,000 of general contingency earmarked for July 1. Implementation of Phase 3 of the county employee pay and classification study implementation and amend section 36 accordingly appropriate $78,800 in general contingency to Gretna Library renovations capital account. Restore funding for PCSA hydrant fees and eliminate section 26 from the budget resolution.
Second.
The motion by the committee chairman of finance, Mr. Ron Scars, for a second. Mr. Warren, any further discussion?
Hearing none?
Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, I'll now close the vote.
Passed unanimously.
That was it.
I'm seeing seven right here, pardon me, I forgot to hear, seven, five yes and two no, thank you, but mine says seven, seven.
Looks cast.
Seven out of seven. Meeting adjourned, is that correct?
Uh, so we have number six, management committee members, okay, this is adjourned, I'm recording all of the adjournments.